Yeah, I see the display says recording.
Okay, good. We're getting going now. All right. Since we're all here, I'll try to go through things quickly. I wanted to first bring everybody up to speed on what's happened. There's been two council meetings that I've been at since our last time we were together. And I also listened in on our meeting and I was invited to general government meeting. So I wanted to update everybody on that. We obviously have no applicants tonight. First thing I wanted to update on is from the, from last time, give you the update on what happened with the applicants after our meeting last time. Can you guys still hear me okay?
Yeah, you're fine.
Okay, good. First of all, on the 85 West Afton, they have not gone before council yet, but what happened, when I found out it happened in the interim, just happened a couple of days ago, is some neighbor dined them out, called DEP, to complain that they were, they had, you know, they're moving soil around and they're doing work without permits. So supposedly a cease and desist order was issued to that, to the guy there, I forget who his name was. And I guess code enforcement's getting involved. Do you guys recall, when I brought that, this up, when we had them in front of us, I brought up about the trees being cleared? Didn't the applicant say, oh, it's less than one acre, so I don't need those permits? Wasn't that his answer? Anybody recall?
I do now, remember.
I don't recall that specific statement, no.
Anyhow. So we'll see what happens there. I feel kind of bad about it that we should have, you know. I don't know, shouldn't the code enforcement officer occasionally drive by? I mean, everybody in town drives by that location. Shouldn't code enforcement have kind of picked up on this?
Well, you said, you said DEP. It sounds like you're referring to a problem with DEP. I don't know that the building construction official would consider his jurisdiction.
Well.
There.
Well, yeah, but the zoning board, yeah, but they're supposed to know whether, what approvals people need before they could do work on their property, right?
Bob, do you have an opinion about that?
Yeah, they, I mean, they should know because usually when you disturb soils on this, on your site, you need a, depending on the, the size of it, it's disturbance, you do need a permit.
And that's a permit from who?
Well, I work mostly in New Jersey, but it's, it's called the soil erosion, soil erosion and sediment.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be under the jurisdiction of the borough, though, you think?
Uh, no, that's in New Jersey, it's a separate entity.
Right, right. That's what I was wondering. I mean, DEP is a separate state entity in Jersey. I don't know how it works in Pennsylvania.
Anyhow, so that project is on hold, so.
Well, does that, sorry, does that put his subdivision on hold? I mean, is it?
I don't know. Well, he didn't go to council. I've been, I've been to both council meetings since I expected him to be in there.
Okay.
With council, you know.
I mean, I would think he probably could schedule himself in front of council and.
Oh, actually, I take, I take that back because it ended up, he wasn't getting any variances as they all ended up. You know, no. His subdivision got approved because Paul had me go in to sign off the print and David Brea signed off the print. Yeah, so I think this was after, after that.
I see.
But. Anyhow. You're right. So I think that that's where that stands. And then the sushi place, they're going to go before the zoning board for a special exception to, you know, basically try to, you know, convince them, like they tried to convince us, that they should be able to use the shared, use some of the shared spots in Buttonwood plus spots that are there at night between them and fences. So. So that's what Paul said that they were going to do next. Then it's, at last, this Tuesday's meeting was quite the meeting, to be honest with you. The big topic of discussion was La La, La La Laps there. Did you all notice the bright blue painted buildings downtown?
Yes, we did.
Good, I'm glad you do. Some people love it and some people hate it, so.
What was the discussion at council?
Oh, yeah. And at a two-hour-long ARD meeting a couple nights before council. What apparently ARD has no jurisdiction over colors. In their charter, they are not, which is strange. Most towns do, you know, they have to approve colors, not in our borough. So. So the issue was not only the brightly colored building, but also the, he brought an English-style foam booth, red foam booth he put out there and, I don't know, a lighthouse and some other external props. And so there was significant discussion at the borough and he was there, but he's, he's standing firm that that's his brand. And he's not violating anything and that's all true also.
Was, yeah, was there any discussion about ordinances in violation or?
No, there's, there's no ordinance in violation. There aren't any that are in violation.
Okay.
So, so going forward, you know, obviously they're going to want to look at potentially putting that in colors as part of the hard decision criteria. But they can't do it retroactively. You know, this guy's, you know, they can't change it after the fact. So anyhow. So.
Because if that was the case, then the mayor wouldn't be able to have a pink house perhaps.
You're right. You're right. You're right. Yeah, it's not the only odd colored house around. You're right. So anyhow, so that was very interesting. The other thing that, that happened that I think some of you were, I know you were all aware of it, was the 123 South Bell. The zoning board hearing, that was on Facebook in case any of you had seen it, but I saw it and it ended up being denied, the request to put two buildings up on two lots.
Has that been before us?
That's in the floodplain, right?
Well, we discussed it because it had, it had cropped up on Facebook. Somebody posted the, the notice that was sent to the neighbors about what was going, you know, what was going on and everything. And, but we, we officially had nothing come before us. And if I recall correctly, also, we, there was discussion of why didn't they come to us first?
Okay, I remember now, yeah.
I don't think it technically had to come to us because the belief from the owners, he had two lots and it was, it wasn't a subdivision issue. Anyhow.
Was the basis for the denial of the application, the floodplain ordinance?
Well. It basically, the real issue was they were totally unprepared. He was poorly represented by his lawyers. I mean, the first 10 minutes was trying to figure out what were the plot numbers of the two lots involved. Very vague about what he was going to build on there. Yes, he would raise it. But it was, the zoning hearing board, particularly the chairman, was getting very patient too because he didn't appear to know what he was going to do. He gave no details, where there will be driveways, you know, all kinds of normal questions. There were no prints. And then the boroughs, the borough's angle was showing this documentation, which obviously I couldn't see from watching, but basically that said, they believed that those lots were really, they were two separate lots, but then they were joined together as part of a ongoing thing they were doing where small lots, if they're owned by the same person, they kind of merged them as one. I don't know if you guys had ever heard of that, but so their claim was, excuse me?
Consolidating.
Consolidating, right, yes. So the borough's argument was those lots have been consolidated. So if you want to put up one home, you know, demolish the existing home and put up one home, that would be considered. But if you want to, you got to go, go for subdivision to get the split into two lots if you want to do this thing with two homes. So then obviously it would come to us. So, so they denied it.
They never even got around to the floodplain ordinance, it sounds like.
Well, yeah, not really. Now, I think had they come there with a clean, we're going to demolish that house and we're going to put a house on that lot up in the air, I think they would have, you know, with all the proper setbacks, you know, one house, I think it would have been approved.
What was the width of the lots combined, do you know, or each lot? Do you know how much they were?
Not, not off the top of my head.
Okay, they're probably, they're probably undersized and that's why they consolidated them. You know, they had, at one time, they had a lot of 30 and 40 foot and 50 foot lots around the borough. But the zoning for years has been 75 feet. So they, whenever they can, I think they just try to make conforming lots.
Right, that makes sense. Yeah.
But Matt, consolidation, sorry, consolidation like that is a process like subdivision, right? You, you go and you get your paperwork in order and you apply, right?
Yeah, yeah, you'd have, yeah. They don't do it to you.
Yeah, it doesn't get done to you. You, you apply for it. Okay, that's all, that was my question. Go ahead, Don.
Yeah, but it was, it was still somewhat confusing. A lot of people were confused because, I mean, he just bought the property back in like November, December or something. And he said, I bought two, two lots, you know, they had their two parcel numbers. So I don't know. Wouldn't you think if it was consolidated, it would have called it one parcel or something?
It would have been one parcel, yeah.
Yeah, they would have. It would be tax records for sure.
Yeah, so it sounds like, it sounds like it's a little bit of a mess.
Yep, yes, it is.
He's disappointed. I don't know where he goes from there. So. So that was kind of interesting. And then the other thing, and this is another one that we had, remember last year? I assume it was last year. We had the parking lot expansion at ML7 up there behind the firehouse.
Yeah.
Well, they got some real problems back because of the erosion control or whatever that they, was on the plans. There's a dispute on whether or not the contractor did it per the plan or not. And downstream of there on a property back there, there's significant erosion and supposedly, I didn't go look at it, but they said several trees have collapsed into the tree back there and it's getting worse and worse. And so there's a big dispute with, the dispute is really between the contractor and the owner there, the ML7. Because ML7 thinks the contractor didn't do it right. Meanwhile, people downstream are getting, are getting impacted. It's pretty serious, so. So they, they put a motion out to put in a violation notice against them so that at least it'll be pushed quicker for them to resolve. Sounds like what's kind of the facts back there.
This, this all occurred at the zoning hearing board meeting?
No, this last one I told you about was, it was a council meeting last night.
Council meeting, thank you, okay.
The zoning board meeting was just the, the South Bell thing, yeah.
Yeah, understood.
Okay. The other thing going on, the Pico lot, it looks like they're not going to waste their time putting in for the Pico grant because Pico won't even respond to the, to the offer that the borough made on the lot. And we missed the window for the grant application. So we were only going to buy the property if we got a grant of money to cover it. So since we missed the grant window, another year's going to go by and nothing will happen. Most people doubt anyone else would buy it anyway.
You know, I don't think they even have to, Borough doesn't really even have to own it because they control it anyhow. You know, it's controlled.
I know, exactly. I know, I think we should do nothing. I think do nothing is the right answer. Anyhow. And then on the Phase 2, the North Main Street sidewalks, they're getting ready to get commitment on the utility poles being relocated. So they're out measuring for them. I saw the guys out there the other day. Anyhow, so that's sort of moving along. I guess that's, that's about it. Oh, the other thing that's of interest is, you may or may not know that in the release bill that was passed, the 1.9 trillion one, you know, that was passed, the last one that was passed, well, in there is money earmarked to all kinds of state and municipalities. And so Yardley Borough is getting $248,000, which is a pretty significant amount of money. When I asked what they're going to spend it on, or what the, they were still, it was only the day after they'd been notified that they're getting the money. I think it has to be somehow COVID relief related, I don't know. The only thing I do know is that you can't take the money and take the money in your borough and then reduce your taxes. They actually wrote that into the bill, that no one who takes this government money can reduce their taxes. Anyhow.
Yeah, I read that.
Yeah, so I'm not sure, at council meeting last night, no one asked or no one commented on how they're going to use the money. So.
Yeah, if the idea, if the idea is to stimulate the economy, then they want you to spend it on something. They don't want you to withhold further spending.
Right, exactly. That's the whole idea. So. But, you know, it's a good, it's a good problem to have. Hopefully we can put it to use. I think, I think it's going to be pretty loosely related. It's easy to tie anything into it, you know? Like, like even if they did anything outside, you know, if they, you know, did something down by, did an improved, improved area down by the Delaware River or, you know, that helps walking outdoor, COVID, outdoor exercise, I don't know. I'm sure they can make, they can do whatever they want with it probably.
How about the second? They couldn't use it to fix those backflow preventer abortions that we have in our neighborhoods.
Yeah, exactly.
That would stimulate the economy.
The only way to fix them is take them out, except for one of them. But beside the point, maybe they could put a second floor on the parking lot in Buttonwood there.
So they can structurally distance their cars.
$240,000 will buy you a couple of elevated spots. Not, not very much, I don't think.
Not many.
Or how about?
Probably the engineering work. So.
Or how about EV charging stations?
Yeah, yeah. See, that's a good one, yep. Although that, there's going to be money for that in this next infrastructure bill.
That's, yeah, that's what I've heard. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Let's, let's move on and clean up. Go ahead, yep.
Excuse me, by the way, I'm, I'm trying to connect on with my wife's computer. So you may see another request from Chuck Dylan at Verizon.net.
Okay.
Okay, oh, yeah. Oh, I see it. I'm sorry. Yep, says admit, sorry, yep. Okay. We'll see if that gets you in. Yep. All right, let's do, clean up a little the business of the meeting, the meeting minutes from last time. As I told most people at the beginning, we had a recording secretary for that, for that session where we had the two applicants. So, so I just reviewed what she had wrote, written down on the two projects, et cetera. And does anyone want to make a motion to approve?
I make a motion, we approve the minutes.
I can do.
Okay. All right. I assume, any, any discussion anybody needs about those? We've kind of talked about them already. Okay.
So. Keep you with, with me, I got a. Bob made the motion and Matt. And all, all, yeah, okay, we're all set now.
Okay. All right, now, the other thing that happened is on March 16th, I think I put this in email to you guys, but March 16th, I was invited to general government's meeting. And there Carolyn Thompson is, they on their own were reviewing the comprehensive plan. So said, why don't we, you know, make sure we're not duplicating efforts here. And so what they want to do is they want to make sure that as they prepare their financial budgets, start, you know, going forward, that they incorporate, you know, the key things from the, from the comprehensive plan. And so we got into a discussion on, on the topic and what they were, are asking us is, asking us as the planning commission, where do we think, what areas of the, of the comprehensive plan do you think, do we think council should be working on or that we should be working together on? They're really looking for three items that we might think we should be working on. And what, to me, what I did is I, I said, let's step back for a minute and, and we're a year, what, seven out of 10, I think of the, so we're still two years away from the new comprehensive plan. And up until now, it seems like most of what we've done in the first five or six chapters is clean up where there were errors in the, in the, in the document, you know, or things that have changed in the document. I'm suggesting maybe we pause for a minute. Each of us, we look through the strategic, for the comprehensive plan and say, all right, we're year seven out of 10. What's been done? What, what was in there that they said they wanted to do 10 years ago that has not been done? And then ask ourselves, should it be, is it still in line, in line with what we think should happen? And if so, you know, how do we, you know, stimulate council to go down that path and get it done, you know? Or are there things that have changed significantly? And, and we think should go in a different direction? In other words, I'm saying, let's, let's put the, move the discussion up a level because if we spend our time cleaning up all the the old errors and the things that have changed in the document, we're just going to do it again in a year and a half. The things that we put in there now, that data and stuff, it's going to change by the time we go to the front on this three years. So why not work on the more higher level conceptual part of it? And what things we think should get done from the last plan? As a way to move forward. So I, I welcome your guys' comments on that. And then I'll offer up some areas that I think we should work on. What do you guys think?
Well, get rid of the overlay transit zone. I think that's number one.
Yep.
Yeah, the TOD.
Chuck, I think you're getting audio on both of your devices there. We're getting an echo.
Yeah. You got to mute one of them.
How's that?
That's better.
But Bob meant the TOD, right?
Yeah, that's, that's what he was referring to, transit overlay.
Actually, I think we got rid of it all.
Well, in the markup we're looking at, it is marked up, I noticed. I happened to go to that transportation chapter and somebody's already had a crack at it, but, yeah.
Yeah, if I recall, we did that a few months ago.
Yeah.
Don, I'll chime in.
There's TODs, there's Transit Oriented District, and then there was another one that.
The Transit Overlay.
Overlay. And they were different.
I always thought it was a misunderstanding that, that TO, what TOD stood for, but.
Well, in the, in the document itself, it was the Transportation Oriented District. But what Borough Council tried to do, mainly.
Mike Rutt.
Mike Rutt and Catherine Cadwallader were, were the two people in the, in the meeting when I complained. They, they referred to it as the Transportation Overlay.
Yeah, that's what it says.
And that was, and the overlay was never in the, the comprehensive plan, but the Transportation Oriented District was. And I was under the impression that we did remove a lot of that, anyway.
So I'm looking at page 10 on chapter nine. And, and it's just as, as Chuck says, the Transit Oriented Development is still defined there. And then it goes on to talk about a Transportation Overlay District that council endeavored to put forward. It was noted that it was responded to negatively by the citizenry and, and they withdrew their proposal. Anyway, well, when we get to transportation, we definitely should, should have another crack at that. And, and maybe we want to acknowledge that as a, as a high priority.
As one of the areas.
Like Don was asking.
Yep. The one that I would like to, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to second your idea. That seems like a really good idea to, if, especially if this, is this group a subset of the council folks, the councilors?
Yeah, yeah, general government. It consists of Carolyn Thompson, Matt Curtin is on it too, the two council members, and then it's, it's basically Paula and Patty. I think that's it. I think that's the four people. So it's basically people who run the government, the town, Borough Government.
Okay, all right. Well, so good. I, especially if, if there's another agency, another group focused on it, we, we certainly want to coordinate our efforts. I would suggest along the lines that you're talking about that we consider, in effect, if, if you're inviting us to take a look at a section and try to decide what we think would be worth a specific effort, I'd probably myself would be inclined to go and have a look at the goals. Because when I joined, I think we kind of had, had already breezed through goals and, and I never. I never really felt like I had a crack at it. So I'm gonna probably take a look at goals. And it seems like if you identify and update goals, then you are in effect steering efforts uh, for the remainder of the document too, so.
Yeah.
That's just my two cents.
Yeah. See, I wanted to look at things that are identified in there that were identified, you know, seven years ago. That maybe there hasn't been that much uh, progress made on in that direction. And then challenging, you know, let's, let's pop through it. And my, my, my number one one is parking. Okay, there's lots to talk about parking in there, but other than adding the spaces in Buckwood, which is good, that was one of the things. But um, you know, that's, and I know council is, is keen to review it. Um, so to me, uh, I think parking is an area that should be focused on. I think there's some ordinances need to be changed. The, the whole, the whole issue we had with the sushi place, um, those calculations. Um, you know, whether you include active work area, whether you have different calculations for restaurants. I don't know, there's just a lot of question marks. And uh, from what I understand, Paul gave me all this documentation back in 2009. There was a whole task force on parking that went and assessed everything. And Matt, you were on this team. Do you remember being on this parking uh?
Yeah, that was a long time ago. And, and that was really, there was a couple of, of things that were the focus of it. One was to try and get all the lots on the west side of, and both sides of Main Street, for that matter, to,
Yeah.
to join each other, or at least adjacent lots and share the parking. And then the other thing was just to have shared parking everywhere and all the big lots as well. And not have those signs anywhere, you know, reserved parking. And also to, you know, get owners and employees to not park in front of their stores. And uh, take up all the parking, which is, uh, was another thrust of it. And we did ser, you know, counted all the spaces. There's plenty of spaces. It's just that they're not in the right place or they're not, you know, just not utilized properly. And uh, you know, and there's, you know, territorial things uh, that prevent that too. But people don't want to walk either in town, you know, they, they used to come to my office, get in the car, drive across the street to Wawa, and then, and then, then drive up the street to Kramer's. I mean, it was unbelievable.
That is bad.
But what was the, what happened at the end? Did they, did they analyze where all the, where all the spaces are, which ones are allocated where? But was there a recommendation to council to?
I don't remember, tell you the truth. I don't, I don't think it went anywhere because the only person that would uh, the only two lots that actually would even remotely communicate was Borough Hall and Wawa. By putting in that walkway between them. And also they actually entered into an agreement uh, where they actually are, there is sharing there. And Wawa Pat, uh, patrons can park at the Borough and vice versa. And that was actually part of an agreement and uh, but that.
And the other side too, to be annexed, to be annexed so that people can park at night in the annex.
Uh, okay. That didn't, that wasn't uh, that wasn't part of it at that time because um.
Okay.
Annex was being used by the rest, by a, a business that was uh, utilizing all the parking. You're talking about the annex.
But today, that's one of the, the annex building is one of the few places where after five, anybody can park there, you know? And I think there's plenty of businesses on the west side of South Main that should fall into that, at a minimum, fall into that same category.
Which building are you talking about, the annex?
Yeah, what is that?
I think it's called the An, I'm sorry, not the annex, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm confusing you guys. Uh, the building immediately to the right of the Borough Hall.
That's the post office, but you're thinking of the.
Community center, maybe.
The community center, sorry, the community center, not yet.
Well, that's, that lot is owned by Cam Troilo. And uh, that's only usable now because they only have two small tenants who don't use it at all. But uh, occasionally it's used by whoever uses the community center. But there was a time when there was a realtor in there and they put up signs everywhere and they were towing cars like you wouldn't believe. And they wouldn't let the community center use it or anybody else. And at one point, they asked Matt, two times, they towed their own customers' cars up there. Yeah.
You want to buy a house from them, huh?
No, that's why they're not in town anymore.
Former customers.
Yeah, that woman was rough. I forget her name, but boy, she was something to deal with. That had that agency in there. But, so it's, you know, if Cam gets a good tenant in there, that lot could, anything could happen with that lot. We don't know. It's, it's just.
But according to Paul, they have an agreement that after five that anybody could use it.
Oh, that, that may have.
That way.
That may have transpired. You know, that.
Yeah.
If another tenant gets in there, that could go away too.
Yeah. So anyhow, when I, when I, when I look through the, the uh, comprehensive plan, you know, the things that stick out to me that I think I've seen a lot of progress on in the last seven years is, one of them is that parking. The other thing is uh, uh, access to the tow path and clear access to the tow path. I mean, I'm learning now all the different places that we have these minutes that are able to access the tow path. But I don't think it's, it's very well uh, publicized, very well marked. Um, anyhow, and those are things that were identified in the comprehensive plan too. They haven't.
Well, some of that it falls upon um, private property too. Like you have a, a clear pathway uh, to get on and off the tow path at college. But at Letchworth, for example, that's all private property and um, the one, the, the property that's north of, of that actual bridge has no trespassing signs. And the one on the other side, you know, both have gullies that you would have to literally go onto the people's property by more than five feet just to be able to access those, uh, you know, get on and off safely.
Yeah.
Not safe no matter how you do it there at Letchworth, you know, especially if you're pushing a bike or a baby carriage.
No.
You can't do it.
No. Are either of you, are either of you suggesting that there's some uh, right of way that exists that's not being respected? Or is it just you'd have to take some action to buy some property or, or buy an easement to, in order to make that happen?
Well, I think at Letchworth, you'd, no matter what, you'd have to do a lot of construction to put a little bridge in. I don't think that's a good place to send people. College, I don't know what the, you know, it's right along the road. I don't know what the, the right of way, you know, if it expands, extends into that area or not, or if that is.
Yeah, she's, she's got her, uh, she's got her yard fence, but that doesn't mean, and that's the property line. Yeah, I don't know how that one works.
I don't either.
Yeah, I, I think it may be a common access way. Um, but Mrs. Bella is pretty nice and, you know, even if it was her property, I don't think she would mind people, you know, walking on it as, as she doesn't, you know, uh, I, I think that's actually uh, i- if not anything, a grandfathered access point.
Yeah, it actually might be by law. You're right, Chuck, because after so many years of it being uh, public access like that, it becomes that.
Oh. Right.
And then, and then even down at, at lock, what is it, lock five there, you know? Behind the uh.
Right.
Down near almost to the train station there. Yeah.
Yeah, that's open. You can, you can use it, but it's not signed. You wouldn't know it was there, certainly. Yeah.
I know. You know, I, I, when I go down there on my bike, I feel like I'm going into somebody's driveway and then it, but I know it's allowed. Anyhow, it's just, it's just not very clear as to what are the allowed places and what aren't, you know?
No, and the, the path to the Mary Yardley Bridge is something like that too, isn't it? I mean, it's sort of concealed.
Yep. Yeah, I lived here at least two years before I even knew it existed. I finally stumbled on it. Yeah. So, um.
And I suppose, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the neighbors that, who abut or adjoin those features are just as happy not to have it be publicized. That, that it's kind of a local knowledge kind of thing.
Yeah, I know.
But um.
But I, I, you know, that, I don't know, it was something that was identified in the last plan. And uh, you know, when we think about whether it should be in the next plan, they talk about signage and, and even from the train station, you know, point to people out of town, happy to get to town, where's town? Uh, there, there isn't much signage out there, um, but maybe that's on purpose. Um, and then the other, the other one that, that I think they should spend more time on is uh, figuring out how to take advantage of the, of the river area, you know?
Access even to the river, I think is something we've talked about.
Yeah. Yeah. So. But, but I would, I would like if you guys.
About, uh, about access to the river area, because, you know, um, I, I guess, I guess the only true access other than private property would be the property that's at the end of each of the roads that um, are, are across the street of it basically.
Yeah, so, street ends.
Right, but the whole problem is that uh, if that was advertised, there could be uh, some kind of an issue associated with uh, liabilities. And I'm just thinking out loud because uh, last year, I only had to, I only had to grab five people um, from my boat, from the post to others. But um, you know, that could potentially invite people to have the idea that they could use those as, for example, swimming areas on hot days, just like they have problems with up at Washington's Crossing Park, at the boat launch, um, you know, all over the place. So we, I, I'm concerned about liabilities if we were to um, make it more public knowledge that these street end areas are technically accessible areas.
Yeah, I, I wasn't thinking so much of the street ends because the street ends are so chopped up, you know, because they're obviously not a continuous thing. But when you get across from, what's the name of the field there near the, near the funeral home that we, we acquired not too long ago.
Fitzgerald's Field.
Yeah.
Fitzgerald.
Even a better place to go down to the river across from the uh, the old rescue squad there by the monument, you know? That's actually ramped for a ferry boat and you can actually get down there without breaking your neck.
Yeah. So.
Well, I think these are all, I mean, I think the pluses and the minuses are something that uh, we would invite comment on. I mean, certainly there's public, public safety concerns, uh, no doubt about it. But there's also uh, you know, uh, public access and, and enjoyment of those features too. So I, I wouldn't dismiss those ideas out of hand.
Right, I agree. And then, and then the other one is the whole question of down near the, the railroad station. What kind of development, if anything, should be down there? They got this nice new, they, nice new railroad station now. Um, but should there be encouraging of any commercial development down there? Or is that a no-no?
Well, what are you talking about? You know, they, they took the Reading Avenue property and put that on the middle touch list and that's about, and so the rest of it, I mean, the Legion could get reused or something, you know? But there's no place else to expand it.
Uh, is the bank, is the bank in the borough?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Actually, those two properties together, somebody wanted to, you know, combine that and tear it all down and put a shopping center there. That was actually part of that uh, Ruddle deal, the Transit Overlay District, you know?
You see, they tore, uh, took Marazo's out and they're developing that property over in Lower Makefield.
Yes.
We actually saw the plans for that about a half, uh, at least a half a year ago.
Marazo's?
Yeah. I think that was around the time when somebody uh, had the plans for the expansion of the Yardley Inn with the second floor dining on the, on the roadside and all that stuff.
Yeah.
You know.
Cause I remember.
Speaking of that, Yardley Inn outside dining, you know, a car went into there and tore out the tables and everything and luckily, nobody was there at the moment.
Is that right?
Really?
Yes.
Dangerous.
Into the tent area or the little patio that's right near across from the monument?
The little patio.
Oh, the little patio.
Right on the corner. Yeah.
Wow.
There were people on it today.
Were there?
When, when did that happen, Matt?
No, it was a couple of months ago.
Oh, because I, I saw people out on it today.
Oh, yeah, it was in the fall. Uh, people were out there, but they had gone in and the car, I don't remember how it happened, but car went right into it, smashed the hell out of things, did a lot of damage.
Yeah, you can imagine how it could happen, certainly.
Yeah, I mean, after all, if, if a garbage truck can take out Starbucks or, you know, another vehicle took out uh, the, the Contav back last year.
Yeah, true.
Uh, Don, did you talk to Caroline about any uh, sort of means of collaboration over this topic? Or, or just left it, ought to do something?
What you, what you asked first is for us to come up with what do we think are the three things in the, in the uh, plan today that, that we think council should focus on? The other thing that they're doing, the reason she's looking at it is, is, you know, their capital improvements. And this is where I talked about this too, is um, if you look at their capital improvements, it's usually, you know, uh, stuff for the police department or it's, you know, fix the roof on the annex. It's like maintenance kind of stuff. Now, obviously the matching grants for the sidewalks and for the redoing the Aston and the main there. Okay, those are, I guess, more what I would call traditional capital improvements. Um, but uh, making sure that the, as they put, that when they put their capital improvement plan together, that it incorporates what's in the comprehensive plan.
And it supports the comprehensive plan. That makes sense.
Yeah. And there's a, and there's a balance of not just replacing worn out computers or, you know, you know, not just the traditional maintenance items, but maybe something uh, different. You know, maybe there's some way that they can stimulate these uh, um, the connection of parking lots on the west side of South Main. I don't know. I, I would like to put that on them, to challenge them to do that. I think reviewing the parking ordinance should be done anyways. Um, and there's a lot of suggestions that have been, but I've got data that Paul gave me that I can share with you guys where someone's gone through and said, here's how they should do the calculations, compared it to other boroughs. Here's, here's how you should calculate for restaurants based on the number of tables, not necessarily based on the numbers, square footage, which kind of makes sense. If you think about it, cars per table is more logical. Uh, and then uh, so that everybody doesn't have to always have a. so that everybody doesn't have to always have a, a variance to everything.
I, I would definitely put parking, put parking high on that list of three, you know? But I don't know, is that, is that's not really part of the comprehensive plan, is it? Uh?
Oh, it's sprinkled in there. Yeah.
I was just paging through the, um, the goals under the traffic section and, and there's not a word about parking there. But in chapter nine, uh, I'm just kind of breezing through it to see the word parking. It's not a whole lot of reference. So, probably deserves more attention, like you say.
That's really an ordinance thing, you know, it's like a sign thing, you know, that's a big issue too. But that's not part of the comprehensive plan either, really.
But honestly, if, if you consider parking to be a resource, a public good, you know, then there's no reason it shouldn't be identified in the comp plan as a, you know, as an ambition, aspiration.
I think, I think it's in the comp plan when it's talking about flows and traffic flows and bicycle flows and different, there's, there's stuff in there and about that, I think. But, but let's, you know, look, look through and see, uh.
Yeah.
Certainly be a good one, you know?
Yeah. Um, I, I'd like to see that, I'd like to see that when they put their capital out, to have a balance of capital between, you know, basic repair kind of capital. I don't want to just see all our capital spent on newer, fancier police radios, stuff like that. Let's get.
What I'm wondering is how they can justify five police cars? And how they can afford them.
The other thing I guess this makes me think about is what chapters don't we have? I mean, are there, are there really any developments over the last 10 years that have come to the fore that we ought to be addressing that maybe have, weren't, uh, weren't given much attention? Um, of course, I'm thinking about, you know, environmental regulations, uh, and energy and sustainability, basically. That's my, that's my answer to, to my question.
Electric, electric cars and everything, you know?
Yeah, electric vehicles, support.
You gotta look at, you gotta look at the future.
Solar, solar, solar power.
Well, the, yeah, I mean, if, if there's a statement in the comp plan about support for features like that, sustainability, then, then it, it'd be easier to have it be reflected in the ordinance, right?
I think it should be in there, yeah.
You know, I remember back in the day, uh, Tom had made a real good proposal that I loved.
Is that, uh, Tom Wells?
Yes, about, um, if someone was going to be doing a special, you know, something environmentally friendly, just say, electric solar panels. Um, there, he wanted to have a reduction of the permit fee since it was going to green entities. But now I'm thinking about it and I think some, one of the, one of the problems was that the uh, inspection organizations have set fees and it may impede on that or something. I don't remember, but I, you know, I, I always think back at like, for example, I mean, I have solar water here at my house. I'd love to have solar electric, but you know, I'd also really be, have more of an incentive if the borough was giving me some kind of help towards it, even if it's only, you know, 10% off what the permit fee would be.
Well, Chuck, 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 we did that, uh, after one of the floods. The way the permitting fees are split, the borough gets about half or 45% and the inspector gets like 55% or basically like that. And the borough was forgiving their half of the fee to help people elevate their houses. That lasted for one or two of the floods, then they reinstituted it, I think. But they could do the same exact thing again, cut the permit fee basically in half to put solar power on, for example.
Mm-hmm.
You know?
Yeah, it's a good proposal.
Yeah.
And, uh, I think.
And, and what about, and if we encourage businesses to put, uh, uh, car charging stations? Um, I assume they got a permit to do all that. They gotta pay permits to go put a charging station in, I'm sure.
Yeah, you need permits, electric permits.
Sure do.
Yeah, sure.
Well, those can be a little tricky, difficult because quite often, um, you know, you have to have some kind of a metering device. And, uh, depending on, you know, where you're getting and how you're getting street power, um, it could involve digging or something like that because, you know, you'd have to have, and, and if we had them set up in, for example, and I'm just using as an example, somewhere in, uh, in the Vincent's parking lot, you know, that could potentially tie up those spots, you know, and what do you do if somebody who doesn't have an, uh, an EV parks in it and things like that?
No, you're right. It's complicated. It's very complicated. Once you bring in the public utility, you know, PICO, uh, and the capacity of the system locally and I know my wife Anne, uh, was, for a little while there, was pursuing the possibility of, of, uh, trying to establish an EV station here in town. It seemed like the best opportunity was, uh, in the Foster's Development, you know, their residential development where the liquor store is now. Uh, because there was capacity and, and it's close to the Buttonwood parking and it, it just seemed like a good opportunity. Couldn't make it happen though, just, just too many obstacles. Um, but, uh, worth another trying, I think, you know, that there's, there's probably other opportunities around town.
Yeah, cause I mean, even they even have charging stations up at the Crossing Welcome Center.
Yeah, yeah, they do. That's right. A state park, uh, right, state park and funded that way.
And how do those, do those work off of some sort of app? So you, you pay for it? You being the, uh, customer pay for it? Is that how it works?
Some of them do. Yeah, we have some in our office buildings and, uh, we, we actually got the, uh, the charges for free. And then there's an app, there's a company that charges, you get some and then, and then the company gets some money from charging the, uh, your car.
But it is.
It works as an app. You just have a credit card or something and.
Right, right. Yeah. I mean, you would think Pico would be out, out front there a little bit too. I mean, they've certainly got a whole lot of parking out there. Uh, at the, I mean, I'm saying Pico. I, I'm saying Pico. What I meant to say was Septon, uh, was thinking of the train station, but uh, but I don't see any, uh, any, uh, EV stations out there yet.
Yeah.
Well, that might be a whole different can of worms too, because, um, I'm just thinking that the, depending on how they get the charge from, cause they probably, you know, I mean, their, their machines generate their own electricity within the system. So every time a train is braking, it's actually charging, you know, putting more voltage and amperage into the network for other trains to be able to use and things. So, uh, and, and if they were to take off that system, um, I'm sure there's probably some kind of federal implications as opposed to them having Pico come in and throwing some stations in.
Yeah, that, that's pretty, pretty far in the weeds, Chuck. Uh, you, you're probably right about all that. But, um, seems, nonetheless, um, there, I imagine what I guess is gonna happen before two long years, there, there're gonna be a few companies that are making penetration into the market to provide the services to integrate all these things into one, one thing, if, if, if there's a customer that wants it. And if the borough was such a customer, we probably could, could make it happen. Anyway, it, the mechanism of how we get it done is, is, is kind of further down the road. What we're really talking here in terms of the comp plan is, is a vision, right? What, what's our vision?
Yeah. And then the other thing that I think we're gonna be faced with is this, uh, dealing with this whole issue of, as, uh, marijuana laws get passed in Pennsylvania like they did in New Jersey and many other states. What if, what do we want to do? What, what can we do to, uh, deal with it in our borough?
Got to write an ordinance, I guess. You know, but the requirements are gonna be for.
Set up a big pen out on Foster's Field. Sorry, I couldn't help myself.
I know, but it's, but it's something the borough should get ahead of. And, um, it just seems strange. I don't know, I'm reading all these things in New Jersey, about each towns now are trying to pass something to go against the statewide law. I don't know how they do that, but. Yeah.
Well, we, I thought we were going, didn't we get, uh, a copy of someone, another municipality's marijuana law?
Yeah, we did. But I guess if we're identifying things that, that we think council should be working on, you know, uh, I don't know, how, how do the, if, if, if you're trying to come up with a new ordinance, who, whose responsibility is it to do that? It's councils, right, isn't it? Or is it?
No, we can suggest a new ordinance and we can suggest addition to the comprehensive plan like, like an energy, uh, encouragement like we've been talking about, which I think would be a good addition to the plan.
Yeah. Yeah. I agree. Parking in this whole, parking in the whole energy thing would be two, a good areas. I'm about running out of steam here tonight, but maybe if you guys could think, take another breeze through and see.
Parking. So here's, uh, just breezing through, uh, sorry to interrupt, um, Tom, in chapter 11, Heart of Yardley, right, is kind of this special chapter that talks about the core of town. There is a discussion about the parking survey and the parking survey boundaries. So if you're interested in parking, have a look at that chapter 11, uh, segment. And, uh, that's a, that's, looks like a place where a lot of it's concentrated currently.
Right. But when you read through that, when I read through that, I said, oh, that's, yeah, that's, that's a good thing. Now it's seven years later, I haven't seen many of those done.
Oh, I see, I see. Yeah.
See, that's where I'm coming from, is I've come from, if there are things that were in this, this comprehensive plan that seemed good and made sense, but have not happened in the seven years going forward. Maybe there's good reasons, budgetary, they were very expensive, grandiose ideas or, I don't know. There could be very valid reasons why they aren't, but.
Yeah.
Um.
But maybe we just need to renew our effort and, uh, double down.
Exactly, exactly, exactly. So, that's, that's my take on it. All right. Anything else anybody want to review tonight or?
So what's our homework? We're, uh, we're supposed to come back to you with some ideas about our chief concerns and for development of the comp plan?
Right.
So, it seems like something.
Take a look through the, you know, breeze through, don't get hung up on the little detail stuff, but on the conceptual things that are in there. What are three of them that we think council pay? Or us, anyhow, but the, but the issue is, should focus on for the next year or so. You know, so that when we get down to creating a new comprehensive plan, we can tick it all up and look, look at all the stuff we got done in the last 10 years. Uh, and then, and then, uh, and if there's something that we want to add in that's not in there, like this whole energy stuff, I don't think was in there anywhere. That's, that's an, an adder. Should be in there. And then, you know, I want to take advantage of the fact that they reached out and said, what do you guys think we should be working on? So, let's tell them what we think they should work on. And us for that matter, so.
Yeah. Sounds good.
I'll make an effort to do that too, and, and then we'll pull together at next meeting. See where we go from there. All right, I apologize. I made a mistake of trying to do this meeting from my beach house. I'm down in, I'm down at Long Beach Island. Obviously my internet down here is cooperating. So, I apologize for that.
A couple of thoughts about that, Don. Uh, we all kind of looked in your email and we didn't see your phone number and your signature and, uh, I'm gonna suggest Chuck, maybe as secretary, could you consolidate, you know, distribute our phone numbers to each other? So that if.
No, that's a good question, cause I had the same problem, although I did just get Don's number. Um, I'll be more than happy to, uh, uh, I, I, I don't think it would be prudent for me to put it in the, in the meeting minutes.
Agreed.
Um, but it, just to make sure that, uh, we're all on the same page. If each of you could kindly send me your email address of preference and your telephone number of preference, I will create a document and have it for us to be able to use later.
Yeah, that we could share. That'd be great. Don't you agree?
That'd be great. Yes, I agree. Good idea.
And the other thing, Don, I want to mention, we, we were just talking to Paula before the meeting and she said that, uh, Mrs. Taylor is gonna join us as a commissioner.
Yep.
Susan Taylor?
Susan Taylor, yeah.
Yeah, Susan. Yeah.
She was, uh, interviewed, uh, this week and, uh, I think the council will be voting on that recommendation, uh, pretty, pretty shortly here.
Should be a good asset.
Yeah, she was a member for a long time, right, Matt?
Not on planning, no, she was on HARB. And Council. But I don't know, but Jerry, Jerry was the, uh, on planning for a long time before I, but that was 40 years ago. You know, he was a year before I was.
Okay.
Only half of the time that I've been here.
Yeah, I got on in 1980, so it's 41 years. It's hard to believe.
Yeah. Anyway, so we might be up to six next month. Yeah, it'll be good.
Yep. Hopefully, yeah. All right.
All right, very good, everybody.
Yep, thanks.
All right, thanks for being patient tonight. All right.
Thank you folks, have a great week.
Good.
And, uh, it's gonna take me a few minutes to get this, uh, put together, cause, um, I don't, I, I guess you guys did the pledge of allegiance and all that stuff before me.
Yeah, we did.
Yep.